Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. I hereby call to order the Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting of Warren Township High School District 121 for Tuesday, September ninth, 2025. The time is six thirty-six. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Squires?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Hope?
Here.
Demonte?
Here. Please rise for the pledge. Oh, we have a actual flag and two virtuals, so.
We'll just do the real flag.
We'll do real flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That felt a lot better to say that to the real flag, so. Much more appropriate. Alright, so next is the approval of the agenda. I'll make the motion and I'll need a second. I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, it looks like we can do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. And now we are moving on to public comment. This is the time for the community members to address the board. If there are any audience members that would like to speak at this time, please come forward to the podium. Is there anybody in the audience or did we have anyone? Did we have a sign-in sheet? Okay, nobody signed in. Is there anybody else that we would? You'll be soon. Any, I don't see anyone, so I think. I know, right? And I have my back turned to them, so. I hate my back and when I'm in a restaurant, I'm always back, you know, I'm facing the door. Yeah, exactly, so this is very, very unnerving. I'm sure you're all very good students. Ah, you're here, you're good students. Alright, so I believe after public comment, if there's, there's no reason to discuss, so we can skip board discussion of visitor comment items and move on to consent agenda. I move to, I'll make this motion and read the items, I'll need a second and then if there's any discussion, let's have that discussion. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, the first one being Personnel Recommendations Exhibit A and B, Minutes of the Regular Enclosed Session of the Board of Education Meeting, August nineteenth, 2025, Approval of the Payment of Bills Dated September ninth, 2025, in the amount of one million six hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on consent agenda? Which would include if we needed to remove anything, but not hearing anything, we can do a roll call vote, please.
Squires?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Demonte?
Yes. Okay, so moving on from consent agenda, I move for the Warren Township High School Board of Education to move to the committee of the whole for the purpose of this section of the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion before the discussion? And if not, it looks like we can do a voice vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And at this point, we're gonna go through the first item, which is the annual board committee membership. There's no administrative comments on this one unless there's any questions. We were provided a list of committees in the new format with some tweaks of what you're on, so if there's any desire to add your name to something else, remove your name, this would be a good time to do it. It also doesn't stop you from joining a meeting or not attending a meeting. We just need to be able to have some assemblage of who's on what. Are there any questions on any of those that look correct to most of you? Okay, so moving on to Link Crew update. I believe Dr. Weisman and Michelle Bertola are gonna provide an update to us.
Yeah, we've got a good team here and they can jump up to the mic. What they're gonna talk to us about today, I just wanna bring back, is part of our plans this year connected to our strategic plan. So this year's improvement plan includes Link Crew implementation and some measures around ninth grade on track, failure rates, sense of belonging for students and student engagement, which is something our Link Crew strategy is helping us with. After Link Crew, we're gonna talk a little bit about ninth grade seminar, so I just wanted to bring back that back to the strategic plan. Oh, I think I'm supposed to turn off the music.
That was their intro song when, when they came in front of staff to share with staff, so.
That was.
Yeah, the students are gonna leave. That's what Link Crew's all about.
First, we're gonna introduce ourselves. Hi, I'm Anya Polansky and I'm a senior here at Warren.
I'm Anna and I'm also a senior.
My name's Anika, I'm also a senior.
I'm Rachel and I'm also a senior. So Link Crew is our freshman mentoring program. We have a hundred and five, a hundred and eighty-five different junior and senior Link Crew leaders. We came in two different days for about five hours each day over the summer to prepare it, different activities, different games, to then greet our freshmen. So their first experience at Warren was an awesome, positive one. We have about eighty-five different Link Crews with about nine to ten freshmen each and two to three leaders for each crew.
So what is Link Crew? So again, as she said, we're a mentoring program for incoming freshmen. We kinda help support them as they transition into high school. So we started with our inaugural class of 2029 Blue Devil Experience. This was just to build relationships, have some positive energy. And then the picture that's up kinda shows what took place in the gym. We all, we led them in an activity where they kinda introduced themselves to each other and to us. So yeah, we had over five hundred freshmen on August sixth.
So with our freshmen, as they mentioned, we had some games that we played and we wanted you to experience a little bit of what our freshmen did last Wednesday. I believe there's a video to show. We did the exact same activity during, during our training day back in May when Link Crew first started and this was us doing that. And essentially, it's just a little, it's an activity called juggling. Our goal is to learn names, we work together and talk about how in high school there are a lot of things we have to juggle, right? So now it is your guys' turn. We are going to be playing juggling together. So we know high school is a busy time with a lot of new challenges and responsibilities and while this next activity is fun, it also shows how hard it is to keep everything together when you have so much going on. So let's see how we do. I want all of you to stand up and then we are going to count, count yourselves like sequentially in order. So just like one, two, three, four, five, whoever wants to be number one, you can be number one.
One, two, three, four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
Amazing, so.
Isn't it amazing that we can count?
Yes, so, so proud. I'm so proud of you.
I'm gonna hold my number.
Understandable. Okay, so remember, you are always going to be that number, so keep that number in mind. And then now look to your left and to your right, recognize what number is in front of you and what number is after you. And then you are going to move around this little square circle we have formed and you have to make sure you are not next to the two people who are currently next to you. So stand next to two different people.
That's gonna be hard. There you go, that works.
You can, you can stand next to us.
Okay, everyone is next to two different people, right? Amazing, okay, so. Number one is, we're just gonna go around the circle now. Number one, you are going to state your name and then your number and then number two is gonna state their name and number and we're just gonna go sequentially until everyone has gone.
I'm Susan, I'm number one.
I'm John, I'm number two behind Susan.
Tony, number three?
Beth, number four.
Lisa, number five.
Danny, number six.
Six.
Steve, left, number seven.
Okay, so now we're going to do that one more time, but pay close attention to who comes before and after you. See it again.
Number four, Beth?
You look scared.
Okay.
Do that again.
If you would like to, okay, so person number one, you are going to have a little tape ball and you are going to have to say the person's name who is number two and pass the ball to them. Number two, you are going to say the person's name who is number three and pass the ball to them and we're gonna go in that order.
Sorry, this is for the ball. Thanks for handing it to me, I appreciate it. And also, I don't think, I don't think you guys were gonna need this instruction, I hope you wouldn't, but toss underhand and lightly, not like, don't chuck it at each other, please.
Two.
Tony, three.
You don't have to say the number, it's okay. Just the name, just the name, yeah, it's okay. Overachiever.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's gonna happen a lot, you're all good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you just have to say their names, it's okay.
That's how you toss, Tony.
Oops.
Steve.
How do I go to one?
Yes.
Oh wait, who is one?
Susan, number one.
Who's number one?
Number one, I forgot.
Okay, amazing, so. So, person one, now we're going to do this a lot faster because you're a little more familiar. So person number one, you are going to pass it to number two and do the same exact thing you did, but we're going to go around twice now, so.
John. This is a tough situation.
We're too old for this. Tony.
Susan.
Oh, for the law of the church.
Already messed it up.
You have to say their names, say their names. You have to say their names. No, their names. Perfect.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Danny.
Steve.
Steve, do you want to do it again?
Do some, yeah, just pass it, keep it there, keep it there, okay, awesome. So. We are going to do something a little bit different now. So number one, you are going to still have a ball, except now number four, who's number four? You are also going to have a tape ball and there are going to be two going at the same time. So what we have to do is pay close attention to if someone, make sure you're calling that person's name, right? So that they know that the ball is getting tossed to them. And this is just like a communication exercise, so you got this, so we're gonna start at the exact same time, go ahead.
John.
Lisa.
Tony.
Danny.
Steve.
Lisa.
Susan.
Danny.
John.
Steve.
Tony.
Susan. Throw it through.
Beth.
John.
Lisa.
Tony.
Danny.
Beth. Steve.
Look at this. Danny.
Oh.
We're better multitaskers, apparently.
Steve. Pause.
Okay, we could pause here. Was that a little bit harder than having just one ball? Well, guys, it's gonna be even better if you say it's easier, cuz we are adding a third ball. Who's number seven?
Nope, not me.
Give the other ones to number four, again. Cuz you have one.
You could give one to Miss Hope, yeah. Okay.
Wait, 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 we got three balls.
I got you.
Students that did this better.
Hey, all of the staff had to do the same activity, you're not alone. All of the staff did the exact same activity. Don't worry, they struggled too. Okay, we are going to start at the exact same time with all three, are you all ready? Okay, go.
Susan.
John.
Alright, Steve.
Do it again. Throw it. Susan.
Steve.
We found the weak link.
No, it's like throw, it's like throw.
Hey, she's number one, don't say that.
Oh, so glad we went to the bathroom before we started. Lisa.
Got you, got you. Tony. There you go. Steve.
Lisa. Steve always looks surprised.
Underhand.
Underhand. This is a fast, it's a fast pitch, alright?
Okay, guys, you did very, very well. Give yourselves a round of applause, yes. So, again, yes. So clearly, when high school is full, a lot of things we have to juggle, like homework, sports, activities, work, family, friends, jobs, that's just like, it's really hard to do and these tape balls represent just a few of those things. So visually represents how much we have to juggle and I think that this is really important to mention that like, we should focus on what strategies are going to help with juggling. So in this activity, specifically, what strategies helped with juggling all these different things?
Catching.
Yeah?
Speaking for Susan.
Talking, talking to each other.
Yes, communication. Exactly, so many of these strategies are the same for being successful in the challenge of juggling all of the things in high school as well. And this helps us to be resilient, which is part of the Warren way. So, we wanted to show this to our freshmen and they absolutely loved this activity. Also, we showed it to the staff at both campuses at their staff meeting and they also loved it. So we're hoping to keep this going next year. But we have a couple more things about Link Crew, so thank you guys so much for participating, you can sit back down, but you did great, you did great.
With this activity too, with our Link Crew Experience Day, I know at least from my crew, as soon as we, like, up until this, the freshmen were really quiet, they were getting to know each other. As soon as we stood up and started doing this, they were all laughing. They were, Ms. Dr. Bertola came in our room and was, cuz she heard us laughing from down the hall. We had, we're having so much fun, they were getting to know each other's names and that gave them, before the first day of school, ten other faces that they knew going into it and it gave them just like a fun, positive experience that then also showed them like characteristics of Warren and the Warren way and strategies of how to challenge, to, how to balance that with high school.
Would you say that your Link Crews knew everybody's name by the time they left that gym?
Oh, definitely. When they said their name, you know, like fifteen times doing this, then they, they knew each other afterward and they were talking after that. Of course, yeah. But yeah, so it was a really fun experience.
Nice.
Well, they didn't do as well as we did, I'm sure.
Clearly.
Well, you're probably wondering what else we have done, some things that are as fun as this. So on August sixth, when the freshmen came in, the first thing we did was welcome them into the gym. We all had a little lineup for them and we clapped for them when they came through. They all had name tags and there was a short assembly before we split up into our Link Crews. But before that, they all got into lines and they learned each other's names, just talked to everybody, everybody didn't, they didn't know each other, so they just learned some names, they asked each other questions and it was super fun. And then they split into their Link Crews, which was.
I don't know, were any of you in the hallway, everyone had jobs at the beginning that do, were any of you in the hall? So this was an impromptu thing that our, that our leaders just came up with. They wanted to engage and have fun with students when they came in, so they just started a rock, paper, scissors game. And so, and then instead of just giving them the directions, they just started and there were about like five other things that our leaders just came up with on the spot to interact with our kids, they're, they're amazing.
Built that way.
Oh no, you're good. In our Link Crews, we all got assigned a classroom and we got to do a ton of fun activities. One of the ones we did was juggling, of course, and then we had a storyboard where everybody got to draw like their favorite activities and everything and then we shared with our groups. We also took all our groups on a tour of the school, which was very fun and all of our groups had one theme. So my group, for example, we all wore sunglasses with little bows on them and we took pictures. Are the pictures in this video?
Yep.
Okay, at the end, you can see some of the photos, but yeah, it was super fun, everybody knows each other and we're still keeping up with our crew, emailing them and getting to know them and it's super fun.
What were some of the other themes on the tour? I saw like a bunch of really good ones. Aloha.
Yeah.
There was aloha one.
Aloha, Warren here. Oh, Gia, Gia had the like Disney, there was some Disney ones, yeah.
Who picked the themes?
We all did.
The groups, yeah.
Well, we, some teams also picked with their team, so like, we gave my, my team, we gave them like an option of three themes that they wanted, like out of three themes and they just chose, so. You could, you could do either way, but yeah.
These kids are all volunteer.
Yes, all of the Link Crew leaders are voluntarily, and then all of the freshmen also volunteered. Yeah, optionally.
Number five hundred.
Oh, this was like fun. Yeah, this was a cup activity and there was one winner at the end, but they head, shoulders, knees and toes and the first one to grab the cup win.
So as it's planned, I'll kinda talk about what's next. We hope to have the Link Crew leaders go over to Oak Plain, will be bussed about one to two times a semester, whether we just meet with our like ten-person crews or we like do other stuff, like this Friday is the Oak Plain Activity Fair. So I am along with nineteen other leaders going over there and kinda just having a presence, meeting the freshmen, talking with them, trying to get them to join activities. We're still planning, this is the first year, so we're just gonna kinda see how it goes and try to see as many events as we can do. Yeah, do you guys have anything else?
Are there any other favorite parts from this day? Did you have any other favorite parts from this day?
I liked the tour the best. I know, I was, as I was taking my crew on the tour, I was thinking about my freshman year when I was first walking and I was lost and I had no idea where I was going. And I was thinking about like how, like all the things that I then learned and that I want to share with the freshmen and just getting to see them be more comfortable and like seeing, okay, this is where my class is or whatever. I think it was very helpful for them going into the first day of school.
Yeah, I asked my group of freshmen during the tour if they felt more comfortable around the building, if they felt more comfortable with each other and they all said yes. Which also, I think I would have done, said the same thing when I was a freshman, because I had no clue what the ramps were at Oak Plain. Someone was telling me to go up the ramp and I was like, we have ramps, I thought we just had stairs. And I was very confused, but I made sure, like every single team made sure to show on a map, we had certain parts marked out where we actually needed to go, what were the most important spots in the school to show the freshmen. And we took them all around, it was really fun. And also, whenever we passed people in the hallway, you were supposed to like do something in relation to your theme, so. I know the Aloha people, they all said a little about everyone who was walking. And then these are just all of the photos of every single Link Crew and as you can see, some of them had little symbols of their theme, some of them had like Warren, kind of like, they had like signage and stuff like that that you could put up too. So yeah, we were just kinda all showing the Warren way, taking a photo together with our little groups. As you can tell, some groups have more, some groups have less, it's just based off of how many people decided to show up that day, but every Link Crew does have an equal number of kids and same amount of Link leaders, so it was just a different situation.
And all freshmen have a Link Crew, especially like new students as they come in, they get put in a Link Crew. We have a couple new Link Crews that have gotten created since the start of the year to accommodate all of the, all of the freshmen here.
They're in a Link Crew whether they came to this or not.
Yes, everyone is in a Link Crew.
Everyone is in a Link Crew.
So they have someone they can reach out to, definitely.
So you have like Link Crew meetings or something, or?
Yeah, so we had already one meeting the other day and then we had those two at the beginning of the year. And Link Crew also periodically gets sent out emails. We can get, eventually we will be going over to Oak Plain, helping out more with activities and meeting with our Link Crews, but this is still like a new thing, so we're helping and we'll find out eventually like more details about it. We'll get more into the Link Crew as time goes on. But as of right now, we have a couple meetings with our Link Crews and then we still keep in contact with them over email and make sure that they know we are available at any time if they need anything.
Sure, I understood, you, so everybody, everybody, whether they came to those days or not, is, that's what you were asking?
Every single one.
That is, I think, pays dividends even beyond the formal activities, because you may, and they have your email address, right?
We send out emails.
So you're almost like a peer advisor? Somebody that can ask, that's not their counselor, that's not their parent and.
Exactly, we just wanna make sure that they have upperclassmen to ask questions to and if they have any concerns, if they need any help with anything, like we're there to help out. We know how hard it is to be a freshman at such a big school and not know anyone, especially with the split campus, so we're just trying to connect the campus.
Have you gotten the question yet, like, is this teacher her or which class should I take?
Okay, so on what we talked with the leader training. We are only allowed to say positive things.
Good.
Do some training around that.
Good parameters, cuz I believe you would have been asked that question.
I don't think they had their schedules at the time that we met with them on organization day, so.
Take that one.
But, but we did, we're only allowed to say positive things at Warren, of course, we only have positive things to say about Warren.
Oh, for sure.
But, but.
Us too.
Yes, exactly, so we were just talking. Right, exactly, so we had to yes and every single question, so even if they had a negative comment, be like, okay, maybe that knocks, that's not the best thing, but there is this upside to it and we kinda had to present every positive we possibly could about Warren, which I think is great, cuz it adds a good introduction to our school.
Yeah, okay, I'm just gonna say that this is probably one of the most exciting, engaging thing that I've seen happen at Warren in all, in the couple years I've been on the board. It's, there've been a lot of great things, but this is so exciting and I'll tell you why, because, partially, maybe some of your parents, I'm not gonna name names, but there were parents on the local Facebooks like worried for you guys because you'd done so much training, they weren't sure if anyone was gonna even show up to this. And when I heard how many kids showed up, it was overwhelming. I was so excited for you guys and I was just curious, did you guys do any, for those that did attend, were you, have you thought about or have you done any like survey of their experience? I think it would be kinda interesting to see like, for those that did attend and even for those that didn't attend that are assigned to Link Crews, like, how do you feel about your first experience at, you know, the first week at Warren and stuff like that? And just get some data on what you, all the work, I mean, I know you guys have put like a ton of work. You, administration, thank you for spearheading all of this and so, you know, it would be interesting to collect some data just to see what was learned and, oh, we have hecklers outside, sorry, I'm distracted. But, I don't know, just something to think about, but I can't be more proud of this, this is just so exciting. Thank you guys for all doing this and stepping up, it's, it's really cool, so, thanks for engaging our classes.
We haven't done any surveys, but I think that's a really great idea to implement for next year especially, because this year I think.
It's not too late, I mean.
Yeah, we could do it.
That's true, that's, that's true.
I think I heard a yes and.
Yes and, yes and, right?
You just got redirected.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's go, nice job.
So that their leaders, when they're seniors.
Of course, that's the hope. When I heard about this, it was, it was really cool, cuz I wish I had this and I hope that I can give that impression so that in three years, the current freshmen are then the leaders that are then carrying this on. And it's been a really cool experience, I don't know about my fellow leaders here, but it's been a cool experience for me too, to like kind of see it through their eyes and it has helped me become a better leader as well as like help make Warren better and help our freshmen out as well.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Can we get gold stars for their church or something?
Gold stars.
Job lady, great job.
Good job, lady. Great job.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you, Dr. Bertola. Yes, thank you. It always takes our people to nurture this kind of stuff. And then, once again, our talented students that are just natural leaders and are going to be leaders, you know, beyond Warren. So, we're very proud of the work that you're all doing.
I just want to thank, um, Karen Trust and Anna Vitale, they're our two link crew sponsors.
Yep, very much.
So, we're just training them and getting out of their way, because they're amazing.
Yeah, no, great job, great nurturing.
Cool.
Wow, that's so, that was just so exciting, yeah, I know. It's hard to move on to the, to the next item, uh, after hearing about that. But, um, so, uh, we're moving on to ninth grade seminar and, uh, I think Dr. Weisman has some initial words for us before we discuss.
Yeah, so, um, ninth grade seminar is a course that I'm going to propose to the school board here when we do new course proposals later in the fall. Um, the course would be a class that all ninth grade students take their first year here. Um, so, we still don't know exactly what the format of that class, as we propose it to you, will be. Some of that'll depend on what the outcomes are going to be. But probably it's somewhere in between, um, using our current lunch period study hall. All ninth graders have a half-period study hall. We could replace that with a ninth grade seminar, all the way to, that's one end of the spectrum, probably least intrusive, all the way to doing a full-period class. That would be both semesters. That's kind of the range that we're looking at for, uh, this course. So to set, just to set some basic understanding of what we're, why, what we're trying to do with this course and why we have the course, I just want to jump through some statistics. We've talked a lot about ninth grade success and, um, some student perception scores over the last couple of years. And so I'm gonna bring that back to us. I think ninth grade seminar is a strategy that we can use to improve freshman on-track rate. So ninth graders are considered on-track by the state of Illinois if they do two things that first year. They have to earn at least five full-year course credits, so pass at least five courses, whatever they are. But they can receive an F and no more than one semester of a core course. So I can fail one semester of math or one semester of English, but I can't do both. Or I can't fail a full year of math or a full year of English, for example. Our freshman on-track rate has consistently, other than the first year that the state measured it in 2018, it's been consistently below 90% um, for the last five or six years. This year, we do expect that that rate will jump up, uh, close to 92%, which is going to be a big celebration, uh, when we do see that. But typically, we have been below the state average every year since the state collected this data. And typically, we've been in the bottom quartile in our county of high schools. So it's, it's a metric that isn't, really needs the attention and I think the board has been giving it attention, has been supporting things like link crew. You might not remember, but you approved stipend positions a year ago, um, so that Dr. Bertola could take, um, could select some people to do that and then they could take some time to go through, do some training and then work over the summer. So you've been allocating resources towards, uh, freshman support. There are a handful of high schools in our county that have freshman on-track rates that are 97, 98, even 100%. Um, so that's really what we're working toward. I think, yeah, I think there's really only one or maybe two, uh, high schools that have a lower freshman on-track rate than us historically in the county. Um, so that's one, one of the things that we're really trying to do is improve freshman on-track rate. Um, there's probably a couple of different ways that I think ninth grade seminar would approach that or be a solution to that. One is, there's gonna be a lot of wraparound services and support that we put in that ninth grade class, um, that hopefully would help a student if they start struggling, they have. We'll talk about that in some of the outcomes. But also, um, our, at Warren, typically, we put a lot of core courses and graduation requirements in that ninth grade experience. So, that second bullet of receiving an F and no more than one semester of a core course is harder for our freshmen because we were so heavy on the front end. And moving, like, or at least giving the possibility to move a core course, um, to sophomore year, uh, will make it easier for them, uh, that first year to have a successful year. I'm gonna go to, through a couple others, um, numbers here. Student perceptions is the other big thing I'm gonna touch on. I do think that ninth grade seminar is a strategy that we can u- use to improve student perceptions. We do student perception surveys twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. And we've been improving in those student perceptions every year, but there are three areas where we still score pretty heavily below the national average. Self-efficacy, sense of belonging and engagement. For sense of belonging and engagement, we're in the bottom quartile, um, nationally. Um, when we're talking about self-efficacy, these are the types of questions we're talking about that students answer, uh, a lot of times have to do with their confidence. So how confident are you that you can complete the work that's given to you? How confident are you in your ability to do, manage complex problems or scenarios in your classes? How confident are you that you can do your hardest work and be successful? When we're talking about sense of belonging, uh, these are questions of like, how connected do you feel to adults and to students? Um, how mu- well do people at your school understand you? How do you feel like you belong at your school? And then when we talk about engagement, these are questions about how excited are you to go to your class? How focused are you? How eager are you to participate? So when I, as we start putting a ninth grade seminar proposal for, together for you, I am looking for some, uh, feedback on what types of outcomes. So, I, I gave you over the weekend a list of draft outcomes. There's things in here around efficacy, confidence, social skills, building relationships. Um, in the indicators of a successful, uh, ninth grade seminar, there's a lot of, uh, student choice and student autonomy on the types of projects that they work on. Um, I'm gonna show just a quick video of, let's see if I can get it. The group that we, um, last, the group that we're using to help us create this course, uh, if it's appro- if it's approved by the school board, is Big Picture Learning. That's, uh, last year, we sent, uh, staff members to three of their schools throughout the year. And one of the things that they consistently came back with was that this school improvement network had a really good model for advisory. Um, so I'm gonna just show a short video that kind of helps you understand what it would feel like for a ninth grader to be in the advisory. Um, now, Big Picture Learning, their advisory model, um, is that students stay with the same group of, they stay with that same group of 20 students, they're in that class every year for all four years. That's not the approach we're taking. Our first step is, let's just do something for ninth graders. Um, so I think you'll, I hope you'll be able to see what it feels like to be in that, although they do reference four-year relationships. Let's see, I gotta make sure you can hear something this time.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be like, look super scary, but if you take it like piece by piece, it'll get through it.
Having the same advisory for four years, they get in a relationship with someone that's not just a teacher or a real person. Being able to be an important part of their lives and you see the material that they take and you see them change, you see the growth in them.
It's stressful, lots of whatnot, and that, but you got it, girl, you're smart.
Advisory is a small group of students, 15 typically, with an advisor. They stay with that advisor for four years. The advisor, uh, speaks, uh, a lot on the behalf of the student to community members or internships. The advisor's in constant communication with the parents. Anything that happens with that student, it's like it happens with you.
I'm doing poetry, songwriting, a short story. That's another thing that I'm pretty-
Advisory gives us a chance to work on all of our schoolwork from the day and our advisor, he will sit down with us and actually take the time to work one-on-one with us and make sure that we have what we need.
Advisory from day one is setting what the culture will be like. Teaching them how to manage their time, their projects, due dates, syllabuses, reflecting, journaling. We do that every day. That happens at the very beginning. So whatever I'm doing, that I want them to kind of take with them all four years, it's something I model every day.
Don't forget, your reflections do Friday.
Yeah.
Because of the relationships that you build within the advisory, people feel comfortable saying, "Hey, this is what you've done well in and these are some things that you should, you should work on because they will help you be better." When a student can relate and they know that you care, that makes a big difference.
Just make sure you do the tracking for these two weeks. Um, and if it were me, I might pick somebody in here who will hold you accountable and make sure that they check in with you.
Have people that'll always help you, people that'll always support you. But if you fail, then they'll be there to pick up the pieces, help me.
Advisory is so fundamental because as they move forward, they see it as a family, they see it as people they can trust.
Everything good?
Yeah, everything's fine.
Okay, mom's good?
Mm-hmm.
Has, has anybody called home and said, "Zeddie is killing it, Zeddie is doing so much better"?
I have a very- Want to take that approach because I know at the end of the day that I know the real student.
Okay, y'all, let's get it started, let's get it jumping. Every first Friday, we pick a menu and, uh, every person has a responsibility. They bring in their food and we eat together and we hang together and we laugh together. Robert, the desire is good. Did your mom make it? I mean, wood? That's just about a way of bringing them all back to this space and refocusing our energy and hitting home the idea that we're a unit and we're moving forward.
We've grown so close from freshman year and whenever we have a personal issue or school-related issue, we talk together as a class and we're trying to help each other all the time.
Make sure that you look at your exhibition date and time and put that in your phone and tell your parents about it.
He has given me the foundation to go out on my own and be able to succeed in, uh, everyday life. Um, he's given me tools.
At this time, families can report to their student's period three class. At this time, families can report to their student's period three class. Also, just a reminder, if you, your student has lunch this period and you're interested in a presentation from student services, you can head to the cafeteria at this time for that short presentation. Thank you.
That nobody has given me.
You don't really realize the impact you have on students until you really spend a lot of time with them, you know? And you see the growth in them.
And what about how do you feel?
I'm happy to have my grades about it.
Okay, I have this fulfillment at the end of the line and you see this finished work. You understand the growth that was achieved and they understand that and that's what makes the journey worth doing. You feel like you got it now?
Yes.
Excellent.
Really?
Okay, so, I'm hoping that gives you kind of a feel of what we're looking for and what we're bringing in to help us create the course. Um, I think just some things to know right off the bat, there's some risk here in introducing a new freshman course. Uh, and I want to go back to, uh, what you hope that students are getting out of that course. But before we get into it, there's some risk here. So, depending on what model we decide and in terms of how we give, provide students with the class, if it's, uh, half-period stu- taking place at their half-period study hall, all the way to that full-period year-long class, um, it's gonna take the place of something. Uh, no matter which model we choose, there's only, we, we're keeping students here for the same amount of time every day and so something's gonna have to ge- to give there. That means that there's some families or students that might feel like they're losing an opportunity to take another course. Uh, it will mean that some staff members may feel like they're getting a course taken away from them. Um, a department may feel like they're losing the opportunity to get a student started in a course sequence. Uh, that they might, you know, start freshman year and take all four years of high school, but now there's less opportunity to do that. So there's gonna, there's going to be some sense of loss. Uh, then the other risk I think here is staffing. Staffing will be a little scary for some people as we go into this because, um, where we typically had the same setup for ninth grade and we can run that like clockwork, we know exactly how many social studies, English, science, math classes are going to be. Uh, because there'll be some change here, uh, the first few years, there'll be some, uh, just fear around staffing, how that might impact staff. This will not decrease our total teacher count. We still have the same amount of students here, still engaged with, uh, the same number of periods, but teachers might be t- teaching different things. Um, so, our timeline for this would be that, I'm hoping to get some feedback from you today and answer some initial questions. Our committee will start meeting in October. Um, the board approves new courses in October. There's a handful of things coming, this is just one of them. We'll continue to work on creating the curriculum November through June. We're gonna have to do some training with staff, because it's a different type of course that they've never taken. And then, in about a year from now, hopefully, uh, if all goes well, then our incoming ninth graders would be experiencing this alongside other freshman supports that we have. All right, what do you got for me?
One small concern.
Mm-hmm.
And I fully support this, but- And so my question, I guess, would be how much homework, and you probably can't answer this, but how much homework does the student, the average, do they have two hours a night, four hours a night? How many study halls do they get? How much would this hurt that? Is there a correlation between losing study hall and performance? I mean, I'm just bang, bang, bang.
Yeah, right now, Dr. Bertola, do all our stu- all our students get half a period study hall?
14 half-period and then a lot choose to take the one.
So they only have one and a half study halls a day?
Correct.
So they lose half the one?
Some don't take any.
A lot just choose the, the half-period lunch study hall, that's the only-
Well, okay, things have changed.
So, and to clarify, one of the options is that we could take us, that half-period study hall away and do this instead. But that's not the only option. If it was a course on its own, it would not take the place of a study hall.
Half-period is what, 20 minutes?
23 minutes.
23? Can't get anything done in 23 minutes anyway. Okay, thank you.
That's not what we come up with. Getting started on that first of all.
Mm-hmm. Um, things that are coming to mind for me are, I have two kids who are in college and both of them, the first semester of college, they had to take a freshman seminar class to orient them to how to be successful in college, how to know what the resources are, that sort of thing. So, given the step-up that's expected in independence and advocating for yourself and all that in high school compared to eighth grade, it makes sense to me that we would take a similar approach to purposely orient kids towards those skills. My experience with three children who came to Warren, uh, something like this would have been very helpful to any of them. The freshman year was shocking and hard to manage. There's a lot of stress at home trying to figure out, how do you help your kid understand what's the difference in high school? Um, so, in those senses, I would think this could be very helpful. I also know, I know what you're talking about, that, uh, a lot of kids pack it in freshman year because they have big goals about what they're gonna accomplish in high school and so losing one slot could be a challenge, how we navigate that. But I also have always wondered why we, why we put so much on ninth grade when kids are dealing with so much, to load them with all these core classes when they're so much better equipped to handle them in 10th or 11th grade? So, that would make sense to me. I'm curious, in the, in the video, they're portraying this class like with a very supportive, nurturing relationship with the teacher. But it sounds like this, in, in what you're proposing, the teacher would be giving a grade. Right, there, this would be a graded class.
Correct.
Right, so how, how would it be structured in a way that, to navigate that?
Yeah, um, my understanding is that, uh, the ninth grade or the advisories or seminars that we visited at these schools were also, did also have a grade and were part of their graduation requirements. I don't know what the group will come up with, but I, if I'm sitting here making a world, I would recommend the group figure out how to give a grade to students based on the Warren Way. So they're getting some type of grade for being respectful, resilient and engaged. Um, and the teacher's doing some judgment calls on that. Yeah, I think it's a, it's a participation class, it's a behavior class. Um, that's probably how I would approach it. I do think that we should consider some type of alternative credit if this, if a student for some reason doesn't pass. Um, I don't want a 10th grader in ninth grade seminar, uh, but maybe there's another class that has some type of- at least similar skills that we could say, okay, you didn't get there, but we've got another class that also does some soft skills like this. I don't know if that answers your question.
I was just, just wondering, because sometimes relating to, uh, developing a supportive relationship with someone who is not also assessing you can be helpful, and it sounds like that's not exactly what this would be, so.
In that video, for example, that, uh, one of the teachers was reminding when they're doing the one-on-one, they were reminding them about their journal entry that was due that week. So they're probably, in the way I'm thinking about it, they're do- getting points for being, um, reflective. That would probably fit either under-engaged or resilient for us. And yeah, they're setting goals with students and helping students progress on those individual goals that are probably related to their classes and their work.
And I was, um, watching that video, I was thinking, these are all skills that create pe- people who can deal with whatever happens, which is, I know we, um, you know, we want to equip kids for whatever is, you know, gonna be available to them when they come out, but we don't really know what the world's gonna be like in 20 years. And so these kind of, uh, you know, self-advocacy, problem-solving, managing yourself... Are, um, yeah, probably as critical as any other kind of academic things we give them.
I, I, as a related tangent, I think some of the conversations that are happening now around how artificial intelligence is impacting colleges and high schools is that, um, there's possibly going to be stronger and stronger reliance on the skills that you're talking about as opposed to content area knowledge and, uh, memory. We'll see, but...
I, I second, um, Susan's comments about loading in freshman year. When I took my son to college and they met with the advi- he met with the advisor, uh, it was strongly advocated that he maximize at a certain credit level and not go beyond that because they didn't want him to overload, they wanted him to engage in other things, they wanted him to make sure he was successful, and kinda got out and about his first year, uh, and learned the ropes. And so, um, I don't know, I'm not a teacher, I'm not a counselor, I'm not a, a school, you know, administrator, but I liken the transition from eighth grade to freshman year in much the same way. You're going to a different building, you're giving new adults. It's a bigger fish pond here than what they're used to. There's a lot to learn, um, as we learned in Link Crew. I mean, even one day makes a difference. What would seminar do? So I second the, the dis- the, the thoughts about front-loading classes. Uh, I don't know if that's the best term, but, you know, heavier loading. We have talked about even senior year where there were concerns that there weren't enough classes. So what is the rush? And, you know, are, are we setting some students that struggle with some of the outcomes that we're trying to identify? Or are we setting them up for failure by loading them so heavily? And then they don't have the skills to deal with it? So there's a lot of things I'm thinking about with this. I look at number five, uh, develop planning and study habits as probably, you know, one of the springboards that gives me, I'm sorry to say my healthcare background, but gives me the feeling like it would be a good opportunity to triage some of the students also. Identify, do they need specific supports their fresh- their freshman semesters? So that we can early intervene on maybe kids that haven't been identified as needing some help or, you know, services or wraparounds. And so I feel like that would be an important time to catch students before they move forward, and then we're finding, you know, end of freshman year now, wow, they haven't done so well. This could be that catch, that catch basin where we're, we're really able to like work quickly and do preventative maintenance instead of, you know, not necessarily where we're reacting, but it's a good time when you have somebody dedicated to, I, I mean, watching the video, these people knew their people. And they were, I mean, having a meal, I don't know that we're gonna get to that at this point, but it, it's one way to really learn how people think and how they engage themselves in their environments. And when you, when you see somebody struggling, you're gonna, you're gonna wanna help them and plug them in. And I don't know that the teachers get to do that in a classroom here with that size. I mean, I'm sure people are identified, but I'm just saying, it would be a, it'd be a really nice way to early intervene. So those are just some of my thoughts.
Okay, so, uh, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, and I, there's no question in my mind. I don't, you know, what the format should be, I, you know, that's up to y'all to decide, but I think this is a great thing to do, and I, I think we can really help these students. And sure, there's gonna be students who wish they could have taken physics already or something, you know? But those students are gonna succeed anyway. Their, their classes, but the reason you want them in the class too is they can, they can become part of the solution. They could, they could become, uh, they're not Link Crew, but they're, they're already doing it. So they, they're modeling what should be done, or whatever the case may be. There's a real advantage to putting people together in these classes and, and having them stick together. And yes, it's gonna be painful, I mean, obviously, that's, that's for sure. But I think if it, you know, the students who are gonna be disappointed they can't get another class, I think that are fine. We're trying to help the ones that are freaked out by the whole thing and really need some guidance, because, you know, learning the process is 90% of the battle. I mean, that's, that is the battle. Because most of them have the intellect to figure it out. If they, if they can get started, and that's exactly right. We're trying to get them to start. That's the hardest thing to get people to do, because if they, all they see is the size of the project, not the first 10 steps or whatever it may be.
Just a reminder, if your student has launched this period, you can head to the cafeteria if interested for a presentation from Student Services. Thank you.
But I, you know, in, as far as generally speaking, just my gut feeling is that I'd ha- I'd do it for the whole, the whole year. That's what I would think would be, just as a layman and what I've seen, because you, you can't just do it for a burst and then walk away. I don't think that, I don't think that solves the problem, and, and if it helps people, you know, not flunk your class, then, you know, that's another benefit.
Can I piggyback on something you said about, uh, you know, some students may, some students can be successful in high school academically without this level of support. But I think one of, one of Warren's strengths is the diversity of our student population. But, um, high school is a time when kids kind of, you know, naturally sort of separate into their interest groups and their tracks and that sort of thing. But I think it would be very healthy for the community to create another space where kids kinda cross paths who might not otherwise. And that, this sounds like a class, Link Crew probably is accomplishing that a little bit, and this sounds like a space where that could also be happening, and just to help kids have stronger connections across the whole community.
And influences, right?
I, I also, as you were talking, John, thought through, like, my own, as I've been thinking through this class over the last nine months, and I have a, an rising ninth grader this year who's a first year, she's a freshman this year, and she is, um, a lot of support at home, she took all the honors, like the high-level classes that she could in eighth grade. On paper, she should have no problems in high school, but, uh, this would be great for her. I see her going, as I'm thinking through this, I see her going into ninth grade and think, oh, this would be awesome for my kid.
Make connections across multiple types of people.
And I can't get the girl in the video out of my head that looked like a deer in the headlights. And they could have taken all the honors and all the higher-level classes coming in, but there are some of those kids that literally freeze when they're put into a situation like, you know, Oak Plain Campus and whatever. And I, I can't get her out of my head because, I mean, she could have been, you know, the 4.0 student, but just, I don't know how to manage all of it at the same time. So, um, I think we talk about the diversity of kids. I mean, there's just so many different challenges, it's not just academic, and I, I... That kid, that, that's definitely the kid I want, you know, to make sure that they're okay moving forward. So I think this is a great way to do it.
So I think it's a good idea. Many high schools already have an advisory. I think we're a little behind in that area. I'd be in favor the whole school year. I, I just don't see how you could do it all, if you did it half of a year, and let's say, for instance, there were people that had to wait a semester to begin a class like that, it defeats the purpose. So I think you can only do it a whole year. I also, just getting in the weeds a little bit here, I know we're supposed to remain on the balcony, not on the dance floor, but it, it doesn't have to be an all-or-nothing proposition as far as study hall. Like, immediately my mind went to, maybe one of those five days is a study hall day. Maybe as the teacher is interacting, I mean, take a page out of elementary school where there's stations, let's say. You know, today's the day where you meet with me, and we talk about X, Y, and Z in a group of 10 kids, because that facilitates the conversation better. Everyone else, work on your homework. So I don't think it has to be an all-or-nothing. The second thing is it provides, I could see a structure that guidance counselors could come and pull kids and just talk to them, instead of pulling them out of a core academic class, or a social worker checking in on somebody, again, not pulling them from a core academic class or a class in which they like. The electives many times are what keep our kids coming to school. Not, it's not always, the kids are, you know, excited to come to math every day, but those electives, so, but I know a struggle sometimes is, from special area teachers, may, in other places, maybe here, likely here, is that I want to pull them out of one of those because I don't want them to miss science, or I don't want them, so now that structure exists where they could be pulled for a few minutes, the period, whatever's necessary, small groups. So I like the idea of a structure. I like every, all the skills on there. I'm not sure a grade is necessarily probably where I would lean, but it's just me. Only because I would want to treat this as a pass fail, like you're, uh, we're preparing you, but I don't want you to fret. Like, I, this is not something that I think our kids should be nervous over. I'm gonna get a B now, not an A, and I'm just starting out school, which defeats the whole entire purpose of this course. I also wonder, again, on the dance floor here, what kind of licensing would allow for a grade in a class like that? Just thinking like certifications and licensing, I'm not sure how that would work. So those are my thoughts, um, but very similar to college, university, where I dropped off, uh, one of my kids was a freshman this year, they had a program like that too, and a class like that, and time where you could go early and learn some of these skills, and they had kids kind of baked in who had, or like leaders who you could go to, and I mean, because they're grabbing kids from all different school systems, so they have to level set in some way. We too, bring in kids from Woodland, 56, pr- sometimes Prairie Crossing, sometimes Millburn, there's Parochial, like, and people move here. They transfer after Elder Elementary experience, so we, we need some kind of acclimation, level set, connector class. We've done all this discussion and work on transitions, and a lot of awesome work has been done in decisions, whether it's people, the Welcome Center, Link Crew, just a lot of great attention, yeah, staffing, uh, has been made to the transitions, because I think that's what many of us as community members hear about. This is another step in that direction, I think a positive step. So there's my, uh, individual comments on this.
And participation, with people like some of us who are talkative, are gonna get As, and the people who are shy are gonna get Fs, or whatever. Number one, and number two, I don't think they need to pressure, I agree with that completely.
This is supposed to alleviate the pressure, not add to it, so. Um, and all the, I echo the comments about, the only thing I always think about, which I would have no clue here, is unintended consequences. So like, maybe there are some, such as, is there a state assessment? Is there some other assessment that by not getting a core class in prior to taking that assessment, now our kids are less prepared? But if we play the shell game and remove the study hall here, you know, and just kinda make sure that study hall is baked in somehow, um, because we're not gonna have groups of classes of 15 kids, right? So maybe 15, I doubt it would be a class of 30, but 15 of you, I need you to work on study, you're working on your homework. The other 15, you're with me today, and that's just on one side of the room versus the other. So whatever those unintended consequences are, they would just have to be thought through very, very carefully. And I recognize and understand, um, when I don't, if I were a teacher here not teaching my class, when I do, it would feel as if something's being, so I wanna recognize those feelings as well, and somehow make sure that people understand this will only help them when kids come to your class. Possibly more, be more engaged, more prepared, um, ready to learn, so, thank you. Anyone else have comments for Dr. Weisman?
How can we share commitment levels of individual board members to support the cause?
So, um, I think the best thing for you to do is to stay engaged with me, uh, over the next month and a half, while we do some pre-work to make sure we've got a proposal for you. Approving it in October would be great, that'd be a good way to show proposal. And I think that if we, I mean, we'll come with some more specific outcomes, uh, with the course proposal in October, and if you can, um, make sure you're well-versed in what those outcomes are, if people come to you with a sense of loss, you can yes-and them, like our students did, and, and help them understand how it does take the place of something, but we think this will be not positive. Does that help? Does that answer your question? Okay.
Phil, has if you got all the feedback you need today?
Do, yep.
Okay. All right, if there's no other feedback, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is possible partnerships for district property enhancements. And at least initially, there's no comments by the administration, um, but they may join the conversation if we have any. As we discuss, any outstanding questions regarding, uh, Gao Beach or the Stern School Road? The Hundred Acres, every time I see that, I think of the Hundred Acre Wood, and Winnie the, Winnie the Pooh, so. Uh, there you go, the Hundred Acres up there. And then, um, we want to make sure we have some consensus, uh, for, at least from the six of us here. Uh, next steps with Gao Beach, because we started that discussion last time. And then, um, we should probably put to bed Stern School Road, whether we're doing something or we're just, we're passing for the moment, to be able to help Danny and his team kinda focus their efforts. So all that being said, uh, I guess, are there any, we'll start with the first one, are there any, uh, discuss, outstanding questions that weren't answered regarding, uh, ownership of Gao Beach and Stern School property?
No, um, they did tell, I think, we're just trying to schedule a time to meet with them. Sure, yeah.
Jessica's a buddy? So what I'm hearing is nobody, everybody has at least the answers they need to make informed decisions tonight to be able to give, uh, Dr. Weisman some direction. Number two, um, what about, let's focus on Gao Beach, uh, try to build some consensus on the priorities of the next steps for Gao Beach. Open that up.
I don't know what we're trying to do. We're not trying to do anything, right? We just have partners that want to do something, or, or we deserve something driving us other than our partners?
So I have, normally I wait, I will tell you the driving force behind why this was brought up. Water management. I, whether it's a recreation area or so, that's out of our scope. Our scope is, we're a teaching and learning institution, that's very hard to do when you have flooded hallways. We also have a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers that we're putting on this addition, we're making other enhancements, but we still haven't quite dealt with that water issue in the background, so a protection of the tax dollars, I think. Those, to me, are my two driving forces. What ends up happening? Eh. But whatever someone wants to do it, you have to, non-negotiable. But whatever someone wants to do it, you have to, non-negotiable. Work with Army Corps of Engineers, I know we've tried in the past, someone to help us manage the water back there. Plain and simple.
Still, I mean, we got way up in Wattsworth, we have all kinds of open lands and all this sort of thing. I don't seem to me we have a, have had a bad flood, a gurney for, I don't know, what, 10 years?
A while.
Is it still bad?
I would ask the admin, have you had water in the buildings in the last few years?
Not coming up from the bottom. No, I mean, roof leaks, but I don't think that's what you're asking about.
No floods?
We haven't had rain like we did when it did flood though. We haven't had like that kind of downpouring in a long time. I think it's been a while since we've seen that kind of rain, but if we do see it, I wouldn't be surprised that we'd be sandbagging.
There have been a lot of, a lot of improvements up north.
2017, yeah, I remember. The helicopters from CNN out at that time and, yeah, we were all in the news, so.
And my understanding, Steve, is that as development continues, the flooding risk grows.
If it's developed in a watershed, yeah, but all I'm saying is with Forest Preserve and, and I can't, Wetlands Research Group up there in Wattsworth has, has expanded exponentially in the last 10 years and, you know, I'm no hydrologist or scientist, but I just, I don't know if there's the need.
Well, after the 2017 incident, we were working with water management at the county and the Forest Preserve to put together a plan for the area and then the pandemic hit. So Pat, Pat has pulled out since our last board meeting, just the strain of emails and draft plans that they had. And it's like, I can see it's like February 2020 and then we stopped.
Stormwater management?
Yeah.
Do they have a, a plan or a?
They did, they did work through with Dr. Algrim an initial plan or proposal that I don't know how much the board saw at that point because it was very drafty.
I don't remember.
And water management was the priority there.
My only question would be how current it is and you might want to redo it.
Yeah, probably.
Absolutely. We'd need to redo it. I think that it sounds like there was still work to be done. And if there was, to Tony's point, I mean, we're investing a lot of money into the, into our investment here. And if there is the, if there is work to be done, we need to do it or we need to help foster it.
Here's our options. We can leave it as is and we have this undeveloped, kind of rundown blighted, blighted property that just sits there. We could develop that without attending to the water with an unknown of if one year we have a lot of rain, that could get wiped out. It could re-flood the schools. We know historically it's happened, maybe it never will again. But we also have people knocking on our door saying, hey, can we do something with that property? Sure, but in return, like you just need to help manage the water there. So it's this question of, do we want to partner something with someone, one of these entities, to develop that in some way or the community wants to? Maybe that's a positive. I mean, it's out of my scope. I don't live near there, probably wouldn't use it, but maybe I would, I don't know. But if there's an opportunity there for someone to attend to the drainage in some kind of holistic way, that'd be great, but.
The Forest Reserve is very big into natural restoration.
Sure.
I mean, anytime they get a farm field, they want to turn it back into savanna, you know? And, and I'm thinking out loud here, and this might even apply to Stern School. I don't know how many of you have been back there, but there's a big, beautiful oak grove back there that's just astounding. It's like something out of Ichabod Crane. It's really neat. But, so I'm thinking if, especially, even with Stern School, adjacent to a forest preserve. Maybe we could get some kind of arrangement with them where they restore it and we could teach biology and zoology classes there or something. I mean, these are natural resource ecosystems here.
So I think that could work into, and I'm sorry, Beth, I realized after I started talking that you were trying to talk. So I apologize for that.
I was coughing, but thank you. That time you were wrong.
Other times, I may interrupt. I think that could be a step when we get, if we were to head down this road and nod to like continue the conversations, whatever MOU, IGA that's developed, we can put parameters around that. We control, we drive that process. So it could be, yeah, you could help us. These are the hours in which it becomes a facility you can use. But by the way, and I've mentioned this before, we have the right to say, school day, school hours, it's ours to use. One, that makes sure that, that area is free of distractions so learning can take place. Two, it becomes a resource for our teachers' clubs to use. I know some of it might overlap in the afternoon, but you could say like after four. Or, you know, Saturday, Sunday and after four, it's available to whoever we enter an agreement with. We drive that. Right now, we own the property. We don't have to do anything. But I, I think your point is noted and I think we could work that into whatever.
Think of those resources into improving our property is what I'm saying, I guess.
Totally. Agreed.
I, I think at this point, I mean, I think we're pretty well in agreement that we're open to ideas in the parameters that Tony has mentioned, I'm in agreement with. So, I mean, at this point, I don't know if anyone would be opposed, but I mean, taking some proposals and I know that there have been a lot of reaching out already or whatever, but I'm interested to see what people's ideas are. I'm very curious to see, you know, what the thoughts are about that area. Frankly, fishing is always priority there, but I'm just kidding. But, I mean, yeah, I, I don't think there's anything stopping us from gathering ideas, so.
We can always say no and stop the process at any point in time.
We need to look at it as a resource. It is.
It is.
So as far as that item, it sounds like the next step would be to gain garner interest, see what, with the priority on the items maybe we discussed and just see what people would like to propose. And if we need to formalize that process, so be it.
I would like to formalize the process just to clarify with the possible partners that the school board's serious. Since there's been a lot of discussion over the years about, well, we could do this, we could do that, I think it would help if we formalized it.
Include our parameters, yeah.
You've got to do reference to go is get us updated study. What danger it's in.
I think the top priority is water management.
Water management is what's driving it.
And the second priority is a useful space for the community.
I, so let me, if you don't mind, could I amend that potentially to make a nice kind of tier? So water management, so our teachers can teach and custodians and maintenance don't have to deal with water in schools permanently. A nice space for our teachers, so our faculty, staff, instruction, clubs, whatever, that would be second. And then maybe third, if I could break that usefulness out into two separate tiers.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, I like your thought that it's during the school day, it's designated for school use. If there's, you know, anybody who wants to use it and that it's.
I don't know that they would buy that, but they might buy some, I mean, you go to a forest reserve and run a weekday. There's nobody there anyway. I mean, I, I don't know that they would buy that, to be honest with you.
I mean, so one of the things I've thought around in my head, this is just off the top of my head. You know, you go on these park district trails or whatever and they have these like exercise stops where you can do all the like little, you know, activities and whatever. I mean, our sports groups could be using those also. I mean, I don't know that we would have to stop anyone from using it between the hours of seven and three, you know, because it would be a very quiet, natural like area where people would just be, now, we've talked about dog parks. I know there's concern with barking, whatever. I have three dogs. Don't come at me. They bark, by the way. But I'm just saying, like, you know, we don't know, we don't have to worry too much about at this point until we get ideas like what may or may not affect the learning environment. I'm not saying not to worry about it. I'm just saying like, these ideas could be very in, in continuous pathway with what we do all day. So who knows? I mean, just bring them and let's see what happens.
Going debate on the Forest Reserve Board for the last 20 years as to whether quote, we're a park district or a forest reserve.
It's interesting.
And in relation to, do we need golf courses? And the original idea behind the golf courses was to fund the Forest Reserve, which doesn't work, you know? But I mean, this is something I know about, so forgive me, that, that you're walking right into a spirited discussion there when you start talking about equipment.
I think Beth has a point though, like, we're almost too far down the road. Like whatever gets proposed may not be at odds at all with our, our hyper-focus on teaching and learning. Yeah, so as to, you said you want to formalize, what else do you need from us sitting here to formalize the process?
I think I understand your priorities. I'll put together a request for partnership and then just bring it to the next board meeting and have you approve it if that's okay. And then I would send that out to a handful of organizations.
Thank you for doing it.
And then the third item was Stern School, just to make it clear for Dr. Weisman. I think there's a few people that would love to just say, hold. Is that where we're at? Are we all at hold? Steve? Doesn't sound like it from your previous comment in the Oaks.
Well, like I said, I, I would be more comfortable if we put it to some kind of use, like the Oaks in back or something. I mean, like I say, you could, you could have a science class back there and teach them about the frogs and the flora and fauna and the, you know, whatever.
To be clear, use by us, because it is being used, right? It's being, it's being leased, right?
Part of it's being farmed. The area behind that is not.
Okay, yeah.
And I would encourage you, if you want to take a nice walk, walk along the farm field in the Oaks in back. It's really, really cool.
Is there anything that would preclude us, our teachers, if they so chose, to get a bus and go over there from using it now?
No place to park.
Really no parking. You can pull off the road, but.
There's a bridle trail there that they could walk in.
There's a dirt, there's a little, there's a little dirt road that comes off of it, but it doesn't, I don't think it really goes anywhere. It just gives you a place to pull off.
If you're going to use it, you'd have to put some kind of a pad for a bus, yeah.
So, so that's where you stand? So you'd like to see something?
And the county is probably decreasing in population. I know it has been, and I don't see any end to that trend, but maybe do a demographic study and tell me otherwise, but I don't think it is. In which case, let me put it this way. The, the major issue that I've probably heard, and I'm, I live up there, as you guys know, is, you know, what the heck are we spending the money on for? And they, they confuse budget issues. If we sold that, we could do this, you know, et cetera, et cetera, which you can't. But that's very much in the public's mind.
And I'm at a hold as well. And it's okay to have different opinions on this, as long as we're providing.
I'm just saying that there's concerns.
No, and I think there's also a third option, which is sometimes when we have too many balls in the air and we're juggling, since we juggled or tossed balls today, I'll use that metaphor, but it's, it's, we got too much going on. So if we, I think, focus our efforts right now on Gau and maybe once that is kind of settled on, if you want to re-bring it up as a discussion, we can. But I think for now, I see four people that are at a hold, one that's interested.
The other concern.
And it's not even a formal vote, it's just more a nod.
The fire department was, was interested in a chunk of that, to put a new fire station in.
Sure. Okay, so does that, as clear as it can be for you, is that okay for now, at least the direction? We're gonna, if we just do it based on kind of where we're all nodding at, we're gonna hold for now. And I think that's it for the properties. The next one was just a placeholder in case there was anything else that wanted to be discussed tonight that didn't make it on the agenda?
I don't need to beat up Stern School Road, but one more time.
Oh, sure.
In my day, it was plotted. It was, there was a whole, I mean, there were, there were, there was a plat put together for the county. And if we ever decide that we want to sell that, it's worth a lot of money.
Planted in one acre lots and water and sewers brought to the west, the western edge of the property.
We could make a lot of money with that property if we wanted to, under certain conditions. I don't know what the real estate market is now. But just, just for the future, at some point, if we decided to sell it, to fund something, we could do that.
Well, to my knowledge, we haven't been approached by any builders, right? And I don't see a lot of building being done right now. So I don't know that this is the time that people are interested.
And related to that, but the area southwest of Hutchins and Stern School Road, copy that. That's going to be 600 homes. Tim's going to put them in another couple of years. Just an FYI, which might be a reason to keep it.
Which is a reason to keep it.
Yeah.
Because of the census, yes.
And I think the Smith Farms are selling out too, because they closed their, they closed their.
Closed their lipids on.
They closed their stable. Their fences are looking randy. They're not taking care of the property anymore. I think those, the family, it's getting ready to turn over to a new.
Tim's getting long in the tooth.
Or turn it to another family member who may have a different priority.
Tim wants to leave a legacy for his daughters. He wants to develop something and have them set up.
So there's some future consideration here. All right, thank you for those comments. Going back to if there's any other discussion topics that didn't make it on the agenda, now would be a time to bring it up, whether to discuss it now or at least put it on our radar for next meeting. Does anyone have anything? Seeing anything. All right, so we're going to have two adjournments here, one for committee of the whole and then one for the formal meeting. So the first one is, I move to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. Looks like we can do a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are here at the end. So as we bring our meeting to a close, a reminder, at a governance level, we too are respectful, resilient, engaged, now and always. Go Blue Devils.
Blue Devils.
All right, we need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
We adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we can do a voice vote? Uh, no, I think we have to do a roll call vote actually. So if there's no discussion, roll call vote please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Charleston? Squires?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. The time is 7:59 PM.
Thank you for interacting with our Link Crew leaders today and for allowing the distractions. We've got a lot going on tonight.
Never face me, never tours the hall again.
Susan too though. Susan, you guys both.